I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for January 22, 2025. Can we please have roll call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Van Der Heid.
Here.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Kebrik.
Here.
Clerk Trezor Kirsten Kenees, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority. Therefore, there is a quorum for this meeting.
If you would, please take a moment for your own personal reflection. Thank you. And would all that are able, please stand and join for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First action is on the minutes. Could have a motion in the minutes, or if there's any corrections to be made.
I did not notice any corrections on the minutes, Mayor, so I will make a motion to approve as submitted.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
And a second from Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Simple enough. Now the hard part. State of the city, so I'm gonna change location for a second.
Yeah, I'm really pleased to come before you tonight and just kind of talk about where we are in the city of Jasper. You know, we've made a lot of changes over the past year, many of them a consequence of things that have been initiated in years prior. I'm happy with the momentum we have and the momentum that has been carried forward. I'm also happy with the way the city has gotten behind our projects, those things that we continue to see as fundamental. But you'll see that the majority of the projects that we had underway were focused around infrastructure. That's been the case with our prioritization of projects. Infrastructure is always raised to the top of that prioritization list, and I think out of the top 20, maybe there were 12 or 13 projects that were infrastructure projects. So that'll continue to be the same way. Jasper is the county seat, and as that, you know, as a role as the county seat, you know, we have an obligation to be there for the rest of the county, all the rest of the communities. We're a hub. You know, we're a hub of activity, of employment, of healthcare, entertainment, you name it. You know, it's, we are a hub within this region. And I just want to emphasize that, you know, we as a city exist, not just because of the boundaries that exist around the city of Jasper, but because of all of those other communities that are a part of us. And that's a responsibility I think we assume, embrace, and we will continue to work in a collaborative effort across all those municipalities, all those towns and county organizations, in order to move us forward. When the county moves forward, the city moves forward. When the city moves forward, the county moves forward. I just think it is the only way that we can really get things accomplished anymore, is in a collaborative mode. Forgot I was in charge of this. All right, Lisa, I might need you. I think I went too far. Oh, I got it now. There. This is, the handoff is one of the toughest things I had. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Kirsten to come up and speak a little bit to the financials.
The city of Jasper operates with a typical local government structure that includes funds supported by revenue sources such as property taxes, income taxes, and other local fees. The city generates income primarily from property taxes, local income tax, utility fees, and state and federal grants. Like most cities, Jasper's financial priorities include funding for public services, infrastructure, and community development. Major spending areas include police, fire, roads, utilities, and parks. Jasper has worked hard to keep our debt limit low. Our current obligations include the cultural center lease, the river center lease, general obligation bonds, an outdoor pool bond, and the University Heights conditional expenditure agreement. In 2024, fund expenses, I'm sorry, general fund expenses totaled just over $12 million, and park fund expenses totaled $4.8 million. Additionally, we used roughly $500,000 of ARPA funds and $2.7 million of edit funds to help supplement our budget. We did not spend any money from our rainy day fund. 2025 projections leave us with an unencumbered general fund balance of $5.6 million, a park and rec fund balance of $2.3 million, and an edit balance of $6.2 million. We do anticipate appropriating $2.5 million of edit funds towards the regional wellness center in 2025. As a remainder, the remainder of our ARPA funds and help funds will be spent in 2025, leaving a zero balance, and our rainy day fund balance will total $2.3 million. One fund that did not make the list up there was the food and beverage tax collection. In the past 11 months, we have collected approximately $519,000, surpassing the $495,000 that was originally predicted with one more month to go for the year. The city-
We also got started off a little slow.
We did start off slow, too, yes. The city continues to operate a balanced budget to ensure we can meet our obligations, maintain services, and invest in long-term growth. Guys have any questions about that?
Very healthy balance sheet.
Thanks, Kirsten. And nobody can speak to it better than our clerk Trezor. Obviously, I can't hold up to what she does there. All right, I went back the wrong way. There we go. So within the city, this is our employment look at the current time, and this is actually less than we had last year at this time. Last year, we had 350 employees. The majority of those, though, were seasonal employees that were park-related, specifically the swimming pool. You know, we did employ some of those individuals to work in other areas within the organization, but for the most part, that's the big gap, the big change from 350 we had last year to 320. The total number of full-time employees really didn't change much. I don't know if it changed at all, to tell you the truth. And part-time has been relatively stable over a period of time. It's a pretty good mix. Police Department would be a little bit down during the year, but we have made some recent hires. We've just got three new employees coming onboard, and you'll see a little bit more about that later. The NSHARP certification, safety, safety is always important to us, and, you know, we're proud of the fact that over the course of the years, we've been able to keep this certification. We're the only city in the state of Indiana that maintains this NSHARP certification. And that's requires many audits, both internal audits and external. So we're proud of that. Number of hours worked, you see, and the average age of employees at 46, that may be coming down just a little bit with all the retirements that we've had and the new hires. An average years of service. There's another number here that I think is worth telling. Over the course of the last year, we had 14 new employees. And when you look at 180-something employees and think about that, your turnover rate is a single-digit. That's unheard of in today's world. We create a good environment with good leadership, safe. They're gonna come home every day, at least knock on wood, because of their safe practices, and I think that means a lot. So average years of service, that's probably coming down as well. When your average age goes down, so will your average ages of years of service. This is really sensitive, so I can't scroll too well. But the planning department, a point that I wanted to make on this slide is that there were 46 new residential units that we had permits for this past year. And it's been said in many meetings, we've all heard this, that we have to average well over 100 a year, really, is what our need is. As a county, it's much more than that. The housing studies continue to indicate that we have a shortage, and we're trying to do what we can to increase the number of units across the city and the county in order to meet the needs of our local industries. We did receive a $5 million ready grant to go toward the regional wellness center, one of our bigger projects that we will ever entertain, at least to date. Nice annexation there with the North Ridge area. It's 110 acres, so looking at some development there, and we'll talk a little bit about that later on this evening. And we did move from a part-time permitting specialist within the planning development department to a full-time permitting specialist, because it was just becoming too much of a task for that part-time, to get out and to actually audit and see if people are following up. I think that's worked out real well. Okay, I scrolled just a second ago, but now I'm not. I might use the arrows. It's stuck. My technical assistant is here. Yeah, if you would. Yeah, thank you. The next slide, talking about some of the things that we have worked on. Our engineering group's been busy with internal projects, but I want to point out, there's some new stuff that we're using technology to apply to existing departments. Specifically, I'd like to refer to the JFD Response Runs Dashboard. And they were able to map this on GIS so that we could see where the responses are going to, and be able to anticipate maybe where resources are needed. So let's go to the next. The Park and Rec Department, of course, this is the Whitey Schrader Practice Facility, and that was brand-new. We opened it up in April. Weather conditions weren't that great, but it was utilized the entire summer and fall. It was, it's been a great facility. Lots of people comment about it. It's really been a nice addition to our golf program, especially for youth and those that want to get into it. They don't have to go out on a golf course and learn on the golf course. They can actually learn on the driving range and be good for people like me as well. The driving range itself brought in some money this year, and it far exceeded what we anticipated. I think we figured our break even on it was gonna be like $45,000 just to break even on the-
65.
65, $65,000. So, you know, from there, it exceeded that. It brought our total revenue up to almost $1 million in the golfing world. So really, really happy with that. And then we did some work, some improvements on the back nine, specifically the number 10 fairway. And there, we did some sod replacement. Moved some sod there over to the soccer fields, and then replaced this with some soja sod. So doing all that internally. The next, Beeler Park. That was a great project. It's been completed. Park Department built a new facility as far as the, took down the old shelter house, added a restroom facility there, added a walking track and some pickleball courts. It's just a great facility now for families. The Parklands, this award that we received, the Friends of the Conservation from DuBois County Soil and Water District, was for the controlled burn we did this year. And that was part of managing that entire property that was prescribed. And we should see a lot of wildflowers in the spring, yeah. So a lot of things going on there. The Parklands Wetland Certification, we've been at that for three years with the inspections, and we did receive that certification this year. So we're very happy with that. Rookser Course, not Rookser Course, but Rookser Clubhouse, if you will, became busy because with the pool construction underway, we added some new summer activities over there. Took advantage of an existing facility, remodeled it, and it is now a rentable facility. A lot of things planned to go onto that park area, and felt good with the leadership that's been provided there with Janessa and the group. The Hobby Center, I think our record before was about 26,000 people, and now we're at 30,000 plus that have been in their Hobby Center and using that facility. Part of that is because we had gone to an expanded hours. It's not just eight to four. You know, we've got some programming that's taking place later on in the day, evenings, and when people can attend, they can't attend during the day, but they'd like to attend during the evenings. So it really has made a difference as far as accessibility during the hours open. Pooch's Playgrounds, they keep adding amenities to that, and I guess we had our first cornhole league this year. So down at Dave Beeler Plaza, those concrete cornhole boards are working out pretty well. The facilities of the Mill Depot, Alexander Schoolhouse, and Schaefer Barn are really overseen by one individual, and that individual is there to open it, to give tours, and is doing just a wonderful job. Over 16,000 people came through and visited those facilities. We see that growing as she's reaching out now to schools and bringing in school tours. You also see that we started the replacements of the bridges. We're doing one a year as the plan, because those bridges are aged and they need to be updated. And then the city mill deck was a very expensive fix for the Park Department, but, you know, now it's concrete, and it should last us a good number of years rather than the old wood. Youth Leadership Council, I could spend all night talking about this group. We've got 26 members. The current work that they're doing is on a new sand volleyball court at Beeler Park. It's something the Park Department wanted to see. They have coordinated with the Park Department in the last several projects. It's not something they're just coming up with. I think they go to Tom. Tom's got some ideas and things that they had in their plans. And when the youth pick this up, they're pretty excited about it, and they go after it. So this spring, you're gonna see a lot of work out of Beeler Park to get that sand volleyball court in. And they do a lot in other volunteer and fundraising. Jasper Fire, and I do, before I leave that, I wanted to say thank you to Lisa, because she is the leader of that group. And they meet quite frequently early in the morning, well before normal start time. So it's a sacrifice to get there and lead that group almost every Wednesday morning. So thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
The Jasper Fire Department, 506 calls. Out of that, there's a lot of those that have been lift assist. EMS calls, if you will. And it's still a problem for us. It hasn't subsided at all. As long as the individuals don't go to get medical care, they're not charged for it, so they don't have to pay for the run. So it has become a burden on our fire department and funding, and it has been for quite a while. We're not unique to that. That's true across the state and throughout the county as well. Got new radios in. The Lucas devices, all right, talk about a great investment. This is funded by our Leadership Academy, and they put Lucas devices in all of the fire departments across the county, but one in. We also funded one, as well as we had a donor for another. So we have three of them in the city of Jasper. With those three Lucas devices, we've had five saves. So what a great investment. You've saved five lives with that. And then-
And for the people in the crowd, Mayor, that don't hear Lucas device on there, but it is an electronic chest compression. So when you have to go and administer CPR, rather than having a firefighter there that gets tired or strokes or different, it's an automatic machine.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Yeah, first time I saw one of those, I thought, how ingenious, you know? I didn't think of it. I got a feeling the sales of those things are gonna continue to go up as you get evidence of the number of saves. We are moving forward now. We're doing our specifications for a new tower truck, and that's a $2.1 million investment. We've been working on that for quite a while, so we hope this year to be able to place that order. And we did have three firefighters from the past that passed away in 2024. You see Mike Shaw, Terry Tanner, Ed Eckert. Three noble, long-term firefighters. So I mentioned earlier the GIS and the call map, and so this is what it looks like. You can see that EMS is in blue and the fire is in red, I think. So you can see how it's concentrated. The fire's pretty much distributed, but the EMS, you see a high concentration in certain areas in the community. But with this data now, Fire Department's able to do some analysis on response time and make sure that we can get to certain areas where you see that frequency. I think it's a great move. Jeff Warren over in our engineering department does a wonderful job of listening to the needs and then building it into the system. And Jeff, I give Jeff credit for this. Next. We did have Chief Schmidt retire this year, at the end of the year, and we promoted two internal people earlier this year, Lieutenant David Berger and Sergeant Ben Kenees. Since the end of the year, we did hire Chief Chad Dick, and then we have three new officers coming onboard, Joshua Pretty, Alec Wallace, and Derek Sutton. And through February, the end of February, early March, I think, is when their start dates are.
Mayor, do those three new officers have to go to police academy?
One of them is going to police academy here in the next week or so, and then the other two are seasoned officers. They're gonna have to go through a different type of orientation training to Indiana law.
Okay.
And so it's a little bit different, not the full academy.
Thank you.
401 is last night, had a really nice crowd. Three of the nice outports for the department show up for it, so it was great.
You can see the number of arrests, the calls for service, and various items that they report. They report these to the Board of Public Works on a monthly basis. Utilities, this is an area that I think we should always take note of as an asset to the city of Jasper. You talk to other communities that are relying on independent service, you know, whether it's electric service, or water, or gas. Our rates are very competitive, and we're able to do that because of the relationships we have and the negotiations that take place. We have a focus on utilities and providing utilities to the city. Unfortunately, the way some of the laws have been written on territories, we don't get to cover every resident of the city, but where we do, our rates are very competitive. I know in southern Indiana, we're one of the lowest rates for every service out there. Also, something we're proud of every year, we make note of this, is that bad debt write-off. That is like .00101 percent, and it's just, what a great tribute to a group of people that manage, work with our customers to make payments if they get behind, and able to collect in the long term. So really happy with that. The next one is the wastewater plant. We treated 877 million gallons of wastewater. Start thinking about that. That's a lot of wastewater. And this year, if you go to the next one, we'll, some of the bigger projects was replacing the two secondary clarifier mechanisms and carriage assembly down there in the plant. But then we're working on a new north side wastewater plant, and that is, that planning has been underway. It's part of the regional sewer district solution to handling sewage in the Hayesville and Porterville communities, as well as any growth that we'll have on the north side of town. Next one. The water plant. Now, remember, I talked about the number of gallons of wastewater. The number of gallons of water is considerably less. So 676 million gallons of water was treated in the city of Jasper. The 46 main breaks, when Rob Young came onboard as the new general manager, we talked about the number of breaks that we had in our system, and it's been a focus of his to get to the root cause. He's doing some analysis, working with outside companies to help us to collect data so that we can get in front of this, because service levels are pretty important, and the quality of the water is extremely important in any community. So this is an area we never want to fail in, and if we do have challenges, we want to work through those challenges quickly. So I appreciate the fact that I think we're gonna be taking a much more proactive approach to the quality of water and finding out what needs to be done to prevent those breaks. Sometimes you can't prevent it, but if we can, if we know what the root cause is, we're gonna deal with that. Jasper Gas Department, they've been replacing their meters. AMI implementation's been a big focus of theirs. Again, there's been new gas mains. Hasn't been that many gas lines replaced over the course of the year, but the gas department, this time of the year, has always- But the gas department, this time of the year is always susceptible to market demands. If you remember, the last few years, we've had those situations, so, well done. The electric department, next, Stan Seifert. Stan took over when Jerry-
Jerry Scheider.
Jerry Scheider, I was going to say Shirley. Jerry Scheider retired and has been playing two roles, Jerry's role as well as Stan's original. And over the course of the year, I mean, it's been recognized by his peers as well. He received this Kerry Vincent Award through EMPA. And, you know, Kerry Vincent was a longtime employee of EMPA, he was an advocate for public power, and just a friend to so many in the power industry. And he had passed away in 2021. So this lime worker award, distinguished lime worker award, was provided to Stan at, I think it was in a meeting in November, if I recall right. And I think it's notable because Stan is a guy that will give it all. And he's the leader of that entire department, does a great job. They are 95% complete in installing all of their AMI meters, so we're just about done. The arts department, next, this coming year is their 50th anniversary. So it's a special year for them, and they're doing a lot of programming, planning to celebrate that. This past year, they did quite an emphasis on bringing the arts to more educational facilities to do that youth outreach. They've done more programming within the studios. And so we're starting to activate that arts center at a level that we can be proud of. There you're seeing, there's over 7,000 visitors to the galleries over the past year, and that's, I think that's going to continue to increase. And then next, this always kind of raises your eyebrows a little bit, but, you know, community crossings is something we rely on heavily. That is now becoming a factor in future funding, is that they are requiring communities to implement a excise tax on vehicles. Or you don't qualify for this one-to-one match, 50/50 match. So that's a thing, we're looking, changes in the future, things that are being handed down to us as things we need to consider. But we certainly don't want to lose this community crossing grant funding because we're getting twice as much road done as we had in the past. They're always working on storm drains and- The challenges we see, I think we talked about it today, there's a storm sewer where you end up with other utility lines running through it. How that happens, we don't know, if it happens. We have a lot going on, street department has over 116 miles of roads to take care of. And as proven in the last couple of weeks, they do a great job of keeping our roads clean and passable. They want to keep the economy running, so this slide says a lot about it. Trash, rubbish, we are known as a clean community. And picking up rubbish is a big factor when it comes to that. Picking up leaves, the street sweepings, I don't know of any community that's sweep their streets as often as we do. So we've got nice, clean streets, and it's notable for those residents and visitors here in town. Jeff was not shooting for a goal of 100 dogs, but he came close. Street department also picks up these strays and then takes them back. And if they have a chip reader, they can find out who the owner is in most cases, a lot of them are repeats. But if not, then, as indicated here, 16 of those dogs were sent on to the DuBois County Main Center. And the next. This is the Jasper Insight that we just talked about a little bit earlier. This is our notification system, lets you know if you've got a boil water notification in your neighborhood, or if there's a storm issue in the neighborhood where a tree's down. This is where you can go to get notifications that impact you locally. Many of us sign up for emergency notifications that may be out of Evansville or out of Louisville. But this is a Jasper notification system. And just today, I think we posted that trash pickup was going to be tomorrow, we're going to be running a double crew because of the cold, so. If you want to find out what's going on, this will keep you up to date. And it's good, not just for residents, but let's say you've got an elderly family member that lives here, and you live in Austin, Texas, as a result. And you can stay up to date as to what's going on here in town, or if there's a need to follow up with your family members. And I think that's pretty important in today's world. But there's a lot going on, I just touched on a few things here, some of the similar common reporting we've done in the past. In general, I would say that we've addressed a lot of the challenges well that we've had over the past year, and we've got many challenges before us. And together, we can make things happen. And I think that's what Jasper's known for, is making things happen, getting things done. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-27. That's an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance for the city of Jasper, Indiana and its jurisdictional area. This is for the second and final reading procedure. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read the second reading by title only, please.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would the city attorney please read ordinance number 2024-27 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-27, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance for the city of Jasper, Indiana and its jurisdictional area.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Phil. Further discussion?
And this goes back to our updates that we do annually on the UDO through the planning department. And there, big ones on this one, just to touch on those again, the allowance of adding R2, multifamily into an R2 as a permitted use instead of a special exception. We've got a little bit of solar chat that we've got going on in this, in there, but those are the two major update points that we're bringing to update the UDO, and we'll do it again next year, see what comes up most and make adjustments.
Any other comments or questions? If not, a call for vote. All in favor of ordinance number 2024-27 passing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do I need to go through the third? Okay. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion, we read by title only.
I have a motion from Vince for title only.
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would the city attorney please read ordinance number 2024-27 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-27, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance for the city of Jasper, Indiana and its jurisdictional area.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
A second from Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-1. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the first reading in full or by title only?
Make the motion read by title only, please.
A motion from Paul.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I do want to comment, this is the first reading, so it will go through multiple readings.
Yes.
Okay, would the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 2025-1, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the adoption, amendment, or repeal of ordinances and resolutions.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Phil.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. Further discussion?
So as you know, from the last meeting, we had discussed, I guess it was two meetings ago, adding language to our code that gives some meat to the bones of how we pass ordinances and resolutions so that the community and just the public in general can understand how that process works, and for ourselves as well. So most of the language, much of it comes straight from the Indiana code. There is one section that I asked you to pay particular attention to that sets a deadline for submission of the materials. I indicated 10 days because I think that's what you had suggested. And otherwise, it's all pretty clear. And the only thing that we're really changing is the fact that, as we just did on the last ordinance, we would not need to read the ordinance for the third reading, it would just require two readings.
And typically, those readings are one meeting, the first reading, and then it would be the next meeting, the second reading.
Right, that's really the only way that it would happen. If the ordinance were to be presented on one evening and asked to be heard for one reading only, like we've done in the past, that still can happen. It just requires, as it always has, a unanimous vote of all of those present, and then there have to be at least two-thirds of the council members present and voting in favor of it.
And we may have discussed this before, but what makes it that an ordinance, or is like a one-reading-only or a two-reading process? What is the, was it about that ordinance that makes it require a second reading, or only a one-reading?
Well, truthfully, the normal procedure is supposed to be multiple readings. When I started, we did everything by one-reading-only, I mean, very seldom. The only things that we did by multiple readings were things that were dictated to be multiple readings because of public hearings and whatnot in the code. And over the years, it's just become apparent that it feels like you're more informed if you get the opportunity to hear the ordinance in an introductory setting, first reading, discuss any questions or concerns, and then come back. Gives you an opportunity for those 30 days in between to, you know, make any comments or suggest any changes. So I think at this, that's really the appropriate procedure. We still do ordinances for one-reading-only when things come up suddenly, a lot of times, I'm not pushing on you, but a lot of times, it's maybe an appropriation or something that we have to get taken care of in a pretty short amount of time. But otherwise, that's really the basis or the difference between the process.
On that scenario where we have to, we need to vote on something faster than the 10 days, you know, something comes up relatively important. So we would vote on that right before we would have to vote on that other item, then, correct? And does it have to be a seven-to-nothing vote, or it can be just majority, or?
So the-
It needs to be unanimous.
One-reading-only, but that's not what you're talking about, are you? You're talking about the 10 days.
Yeah, you're talking about the 10 days. So-
That can be a majority.
Just a majority.
I would suggest that we make that a unanimous requirement, if we're going to have the requirement. Because everything else, on exceptions, refers to unanimous consent. That's what I would prefer.
That's your prerogative. I only-
Still have two readings.
That's not the ordinance, though, is it? Is the statute?
The statute does not require any time limitation. That's just a local preference.
I mean, you're always going to have them what is, so I think majority would be fine on, you know, just some emergency ordinances and stuff like that that might come up.
You would still-
I mean, let's shoot for 90% or better rate, you know, if it doesn't happen, but it could happen, where you don't get information on time.
So as it reads, then, we could have a four-to-three vote that we need to vote on something that night, and then we would vote on that particular item, then, correct? So every time, like if there's-
But that would just be the first reading, unless you voted unanimously to approve it, and that wouldn't happen if you didn't have a unanimous vote.
And you have to go see two readings.
Does that make sense?
So the one-reading procedure would have to have seven-to-nothing votes, right, through that way.
But to get it, to allow us to vote, in other words, you might bring something up that we need to vote on, but the board says, you know what, we need more time, and so we could actually vote it down.
That's correct.
Okay, so we need a majority vote, so we could pass it four-to-three, and then we would vote on the item, and if it passes seven-to-nothing, it would go through then.
For the first reading.
For the first reading, yeah.
Yes. It wouldn't have to be seven to nothing.
It could be four-to-three.
You would need seven, nothing to make it a one-reading-only, to get it passed that night.
Well, I'd at least recommend, if we can't get a unanimous consent on that, I'd say two-thirds. Let's make it a little stronger. I mean, it's important to me to be deliberate and pump the brakes. We'll see that later tonight, why I say that, but to have the extra time is helpful. And I think it's important to be cautious, give yourselves the extra time. I would also recommend a change in that section for letter C. Right now, the way it's worded, the way I read it, is it says, okay, the 10-day rule can be satisfied by either emailing it or putting it into our internal mailbox. So there's technically no rule according to this that says, I've got to be notified that it's sitting in my mailbox downstairs. I would like it to, I'd like to have a little bit more teeth, I guess.
May you send everything out, email?
I know our current practice is that we do get the emails, but the way it's worded just is a little ridiculous.
I mean, I do typically, once I make all the copies of everything, I try to, I mean, I think I have standard emailed you and said, copies are in your box, when they are.
Right.
So scratch it. I'm just, I mean, I'm willing to do that.
I'm not, I will do whatever you tell me to do, I'm just not sure that those kinds of details are what is intended to be part of our city law. It's entirely up to you.
But I see what Chad's saying, because that could be in your box, in the mailbox down there, but no one told you it was in there, and then you show up for the meeting, and like, I never saw this before.
I would say that it is, if this passes, then you know that anything that is intended to be on the agenda is going to be in your mailbox on or before that, whatever that 10th day is.
Second line under C, just scratch either and change or to and. You'll have it by email and in your mailbox. So scratch either and change or to and.
I think that's it.
I think that covers everything that you're talking about, right?
Yes.
And/or.
I can do that.
Well, the only reason I put or, honestly, is because if- Well, the only reason I put or, honestly, is because if there comes a time when we go to electronic and there is no more internal mailbox, that's why I put the or.
At that time, we'd make an adjustment to this. Okay, so we've got the adjustment in section C, or section four, paragraph C, to scratch out either, and it's now by email, scratch out or, and by print copy. Is there another change? That was...
I would recommend a two-thirds majority in that rule, to suspend the rules.
What do we have to do? Do we have to vote on that, or is that?
If that's what, I can make that change.
I don't feel that it's necessary, okay? I don't feel it's necessary. We have a state statute that we follow in our ordinances. Now, if he wants to do that, then somebody, then you have to vote on it, I would assume, to make a change.
I guess that's technically a motion on my part, if there's no second, then there's no vote.
That's fair.
Okay, so I have a motion to add a two-thirds vote to be able to consider the ordinance...
To be able to weigh...
Section four, item C, to suspend the 10-day requirement rule, to have a two-thirds majority.
Isn't that pretty much the same thing as what we have, what's two-thirds of seven?
Good question.
So, two-thirds of seven, we're still going to have it, it still needs to be a fourth, a fourth or five vote then, right?
I think it's going to be five.
It'd be five.
It would be five.
Five, two-thirds.
Five, yeah.
Okay. Not good enough, Matt, sorry.
It's close.
It'd be four-point-six-nine.
Four-point-six, that'll be.
Yeah.
Most would be a show-up that night.
So, you get half a vote?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't see it, where the change is to be.
And it would be a vote, so it would be a majority, or in that case, two-thirds of those present voting, not of, so if somebody was absent, that would make a difference.
So, unless the common counsel shall vote a two-thirds majority to take up consideration, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
To add that verbiage.
Isn't that in section E? Next page, section E. Last sentence, the two-thirds vote of all the elected members is required to pass an ordinance on the first reading?
No, because we're not talking about that. We're not talking about the one-reading-only.
We're talking about a last-minute ordinance.
Yeah.
So, vote to take...
I mean, I know what the change is, if you want to take the vote.
All right, so I've got a motion from Chad to change that to a two-thirds vote or take up consideration in suspending the rules. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vince.
Thank you, Vince.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
I heard Chad, Vince, Paul, Paul, and Phil, and Nancy. Okay, so it's five to two. All against, sign by saying nay.
Nay.
Who's the second nay?
Kevin.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll add that to it then. All right, so we need to come forward with the revision to vote on it, or with these revisions?
It will come to the, so, where are we? Have we done a motion?
The second reading, you have that.
Right, but have we done a motion and a second?
For the first reading, to approve the ordinance on the first reading.
Okay. So, it will come to you at the next meeting with the amendments?
I think they just voted to make this change.
They just voted to make the change, to add that to change to it.
Okay, great. You voted on the amendment, so now vote to move it forward for second reading at the next meeting.
With the amendments.
With the amendments.
So, it has passed first reading with the...
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, right.
So...
But we've agreed to amend it.
Correct, right.
For the first reading vote.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And Phil and Vince, you guys are the ones that made the motions to begin with. You agree with the amendments, moving forward with it? Okay, no further discussion, all in favor moving forward with 2025-1 with stated amendments, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item on the agenda is encumbrances for 2024 to 2025.
I previously provided a detailed list of 2024 encumbrances to be carried forward to, into 2025, including the amount and the description for each. These encumbrances represent funds that were committed in 2024 but were not fully expended by the close of the fiscal year. The total amount of dollars to be encumbered is $8,166,886.34. Does anyone have any questions about the encumbrances?
I'll move to approve the encumbrances.
I'll second.
I have a motion from John and a second from Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next item on the agenda is the president pro temp for 2025.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Phil Lundey as the president pro temp for 2025.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
Second from Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Phil.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Northridge TIF, Kirsten's representative. Want to come forward?
Good evening, council. Rüger Kirsten's here, on behalf of Kirsten's Development, Inc. First, wanted to start this off and give my sincerest apologies for the mix-up and the misunderstanding that I had through the prior conversations leading up to this point. It was an honest, professional mistake on my end, and I have taken the measures of hiring the proper consultants, Mr. Nick Lawrence over here with the Wheatley Group, to assist me through finalizing this process, and then for future projects moving forward, I will have professional representation to make sure that everything is ironed out and done in the proper way, so I don't make this mistake again. So, I own that, and I apologize, and I'm sorry for the confusion that it caused. So, why are we here today? Yesterday, I had the pleasure of standing in front of the utility board for the main extension reimbursement, and that's what I meant by the mistake I made, by misunderstanding that the main extension was not getting the utilities to the site, but rather the main extension reimbursement throughout the project. With that, beginning in November, we started having conversations with Rob and a couple internal conversations to conclude a dollar amount of what that main extension reimbursement would be, be it that there was no amount calculated or discussed leading up to that point, whenever I brought this to everybody's attention at that time. Since then, received favorable recommendation, I don't know the exact terminology of what happened last night, but they passed it, and that's why I'm here today, for further consideration with the TIF agreement that we were in months ago. So, since then, I think I was able to, we've had several meetings on this, and I've presented a lot of information on the project, and I don't want to go back and talk about points that we've already talked about before, but some new things since then. The developer agreement that was presented alongside, that was being talked about with the main extension reimbursement. As we were getting final estimates and everything else regarding the construction of the homes and the infrastructure itself, based on some requirements to make the infrastructure meet city code, along with material price increases, whenever we started this conversation, initially back in about April, whenever the estimates, April of '24, when the estimates were put together, we experienced some pretty significant headwinds with price increases, and I'm also trying to project this out into the future, potentially 10 years of finishing this project, so I hope everybody can respect that it's an extremely difficult math problem to solve, trying to guess what inflationary measures that we'll face over the upcoming years. All of that to be said, we were also notified that we did not receive the ready-to funding, which is a very integral part of this entire project itself. Since then, we've tried to become creative and figure out other ways to make sure that this makes sense financially, and still obtain the price points that we were trying to accomplish in the first place. Thank you, everybody, for your support on the RIF application. I think everybody on this council received notification that we were awarded the RIF loan in the sum of $2,360,000, and I'm very grateful for that, as it's going to help a lot in saving the financing and carry costs of this project over the years. So, thank you all very much for your consideration, allowing me to apply for that program. The infrastructure estimates themselves, there was some documentation sent out on that, and the original estimate that we had submitted in the 5.127 range in there is now north of $6 million. So, as you can imagine, trying to keep the exact target price points that we had before was extremely difficult and became essentially not feasible for the project, and that's where the consideration for a 10% target price point of the homes at $275,000 was brought to everybody's attention, and along with the villas as a target price point of 240, and then the lot cost, the lot price, average sale at $43,500. And those are off a little bit from the numbers that we had discussed before, but I can assure you, after doing some market research of other communities, we are still far below what other communities are producing of the similar product type. A lot of other communities that I saw delivering products like this in subdivisions very similar, they were starting in the $308,000 to $320,000 for a very similar home. So, starting in the $275,000 range, I still deem that a huge success for the community of Jasper, and be able to provide housing at a reasonable cost to our residents here. So, all of that to be said, I won't get into detail on exactly the outcomes of today's meeting, I don't feel as if that's my position to do that, but my request today is to amend the TIF agreement to show the reflection of removing the term "in lieu of" to allow for us to receive the main extension reimbursement fee, reimbursement amount up to the amount that was approved last night, and that was $459,000 calculated by the utility board. Along with that, wanted to come today and just set realistic expectations on what it's actually going to cost to build these homes and what the target sale prices are going to be, so I didn't have to come back next year and re-explain to everybody why we didn't meet any of those price points. Felt it was very important to be transparent and honest through this process, and I hope that everybody can see I've given it my best effort through all of this to do so, be it that we're all in the same team here, trying to provide housing at an attainable price for the residents here in Jasper. So, all of that to be said, I did bring, again, Nick Lawrence here, he's to assist in answering questions. He's done, I'll let him introduce himself if he comes up here, but he's done many of these projects, helping be a liaison between packaging up incentives and helping developers and public municipalities come together in a successful private, public-private partnership. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions tonight.
Any questions of Rüger?
I guess I have a question, just, I'm not a real estate guy, nor do I pretend to play one, how's it go, play one on TV? So, but, it's my understanding, Rüger, if without the TIF subsidy, the home price, or I guess the lot price, which gets incorporated, embedded in the home price, starting price, you're going to be in that price point that we're looking for, whether it's the 250 or the 275, you would be there, what you can deliver with or without the TIF. Isn't that correct?
I don't think that's exactly correct, because there's a lot more that goes into the longevity of these projects and the amount of carry, and it also depends on if the, if the development itself is successful. So, whenever you're calculating these things in, being able to collect through the years to float, I'm using the term float, because if we install, you know, over $6 million of public infrastructure and can't sell any lots, the lots that we do sell, that money that we're recouping back is going to assist us and help carry this. So, I can't give an exact answer on that, other than the answer I can give is that we're giving it our best honest effort to provide these quality homes at the best price possible to the community, and the way that we can do that is through the public-private partnership that we're discussing today. So, that was a very roundabout answer to your question, but I can't answer that extremely directly.
Rüger, before you had mentioned that you, in the developer agreement, there was going to be a certain percentage of homes that would be sold at a certain price point. Are you still, and I know that price point changed, but you're still willing to agree to sell?
10%.
10% of homes at $275,000, is that correct?
Yeah.
If you have the water main agreement and the $1.1 million?
Correct.
You'll sell 10% of homes at $275,000.
So, how does that work? Do you just build a spec home at 275 and say, here it is?
Yeah, that's a really good question. No, that's a really good question, because that's a, that was a common, that was a recurring question brought up, and the reason, throughout these 155 housing units that would be developed, we will then, essentially, if we don't have enough clients that are going to build at that price point, because we sell the lot, the homeowner can then design the home in whatever fashion they choose. So, we can't, you know, somebody might increase the footprint or put different upgrades in their home, and it could, while it started at 275 with the upgrades that they put in there, it could end at $300,000 to their choice, but it would be my obligation now to make sure that I provide 10 spec homes that are at or below 275 to make sure that I meet the requirement that I'm telling everybody today in this room, so...
10 homes are 10%?
Yeah, it's 10% is what it said.
10% of the homes, correct.
10% of the homes, not 10 homes.
Sorry, B.
15.
Respectively. 12, plus the villas, but, again, it's, I understand the reason for the developer agreement and for the council to be able to measure the success of this partnership. So, it's, again, we don't like building spec homes, but we're going to, to make sure that we meet the requirements that we have agreed to in this, so that's a direct answer on that. We like people to be able to choose and build the home that they choose instead of moving into a spec, but we will be building specs in the subdivision, so...
Why did my calculations, right, about $275,000, a $1,250 square foot home, you're about $220 a square foot?
Yeah, with a lot, yeah.
Vince, you're in the construction trades, what's the average on?
I'd say that's about average right now, so...
On your construction?
Yeah.
Well, and that includes a lot, too.
No, that's right.
Yeah.
That's what I was just going to say, that's everything all in, at $220.
Remember, at that price point, you have a couple options to offer to the builder, in other words, somebody comes in and says, you know what, I'm looking at that 275 price range right there, but you have one, you have three, four different ones, so there's a good chance somebody will come in and say, you know, it doesn't have to be a spec home, I want that home, build me that home at 275, because I like Plan C, or something like that, as an example, if that would be correct?
Yeah, we've got, you know, we've got thousands of home plans that customers can pick from, I'm not saying all of those are going to be in that price range.
But there are.
I haven't, I haven't quantified them, but there's a lot that somebody can pick from.
And that's good, I mean, that'll help you out, because, you know, to your point, I don't think it's the best scenario for you to start building, sticking that kind of your own money in the hole, but you're not sure that it's going to sell, but if customers or the homeowners are wanting something like that, I think if you have different ones to choose from, you're more apt to sell that.
Absolutely, and somebody could come in and design a brand-new floor plan that could be in that price range, too.
And for the board's knowledge as well, on the plan side of things, if he says he's going to come in and build 10 homes in there, we have some things in place in the UVO so that we don't see 10 exactly the same homes right next to each other all right down, there's got to be some variation.
And, Rüger, does a 275 price include the lot?
Yes, yeah.
And I'm going to guess that 275 includes the, what you would take off for the TIF, the utility reimbursement and the savings on the RIF?
Correct.
So it's, really would be starting out at closer to 287. Is that right?
Per square foot?
287,000. I'm sorry for those 10%, for those 10%.
Potentially.
Without the subsidies?
Without the subsidies, yeah, without the subsidies.
The incentives.
Without the incentives.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
And that's Ruger, that's where I was at when I was suggesting that you're still going to be in that price point without the incentive. But I know it's a nuanced, complicated answer, but I can't wrap my mind around that. I can't, I can't get away from that thought, I guess, is.
Well, without the TIF, he's 4.2% higher on the same house.
In there on the 2. At that point, I think you know what he's trying to do is, Chad, is still building his own homes with the best possible price bracket. We can save the end user 10, $12,000 if it's for that person in that area. And that's the goal of what you're attempting to do.
For some people, that's a choice of this window or that window, you know?
It is, but for others, that $13,000, when you're talking about putting your 20% down for your PMI, that's a big deal.
That.
The average household, the average household won't be able to afford these houses from this community.
Also, the housing study has shown that this is a price point that we need from the county when they did their housing study, that we needed more affordable housing. Now, what, how do you determine affordable housing when inflation is at 40-year high? And I think it's phenomenal that you feel you can get in there at 275 with all the price increases and things that you've had to deal with over just the last few years. And hopefully, we'll get that under control with new leadership. But it's been very difficult. I don't know how you even put a plan together when you don't know what they're going to be doing. You have to make estimates of how much those things are going to be going up over the course of that plan. So if we want to support growth in our community, then we want to support housing for that growth so that we can get people to move here. We have companies that need people to work at them. We have people, probably, what do you think, Mayor, 20,000 that are driving into Jasper every day? 15,000, whatever, I don't know the number. But they're driving here because there's no place to live for them. And we want some of those people to live here, to work at Jasper Endings, to work at Kimball, to work at Master Brands, to work at these different places that are very, very important to our community. And this is just a tool to help support the growth, to help support an incentive for the growth of what we're trying to do here. So I commend you, Ruger, for investing in Jasper, what you've done so far and what you're trying to do. And this is just a tool to help us to keep those prices down as low as possible. If we don't trust anyone, then why do we even move forward with anything? You have to trust people. And I don't get that out of what we're trying to do here. And I don't even agree with a 10-year sunset on things because the state put the statute in so that mayors and councils of the future could make the best decisions for their communities. That's why they put that into that level. If we don't trust council members in the future that are going to make good decisions, or mayors that are going to make good decisions, then we have to get that down to a 10-year window. I trust whoever's going to be here. I've been fortunate to be here for a while, but I trust everybody that's here and I'll trust everybody that this community will pick in the future. So I'm not, I don't have a trust factor with what we're trying to do. What I see us here is we're trying to promote growth in our community through affordable housing, which Ruger is trying very, very hard to do. That's my view on it. So I'm up for the, I think it should be a 20-year window so that they have flexibility, so they can make good decisions. There's, who knows what laws are going to change in the next few years? I mean, we're sitting here, this is the game we've got today. Next year, somebody else may come up with something else. Our property tax rates might go down 20% if Governor Brown decides he wants to make some changes in property taxes. So we're going to have to adapt and adjust to whatever the game is as we move forward. So this is what the game is now. So I don't think we should change the game. We should just play the game the best to our ability, what we feel is best for our community and best for the future of Jasper and the best for our growth. So that's my two cents.
I, you know, I like the utility reimbursement. I think that's great. And I like the RIF. I think that's pretty good. It's the TIF that I don't like and capturing that, you know, pulling that out. And that was my only concern about it. You know, I would prefer to see that you just build whatever houses you want at whatever price you can sell them at.
That's, I'd say that.
Instead of trying to say, well, we're just going to make 10, even at what I would say is a high price point for most people.
Art, that's a good point. And I think that the point here is that we're not, is not that we're trying to maximize the home sale price, is that we're trying to accomplish the opposite. And what I've been talking about, you know, hasn't changed since day one. And that's being able to provide these at the best possible price for the residents here because that's what our community needs. Right now, we do not have another subdivision, quite frankly, planned in Jasper. Brookstone 7 is filling up. After Brookstone 7 is filled up, we have no subdivision to go to. To your point, Kevin, for future growth of our community, at the moment, it's tapped out. So that's why this project, I believe, is crucial. And I also believe, based on the feedback that we're getting from our clientele, is it's in our best interest to deliver a product that's at the best possible price. And that's our goal. And that's what I've said from the beginning. And that's what we're going to do throughout the end of this project as well.
One other point to make, as we correct some of the things that's been, that we've dealt with in inflation in the last few years, that's going to be a positive effect or it could have a positive effect on our growth and how many houses we can build. And 275, the interest rate is going to come down. I believe wholeheartedly that the interest rate will come down as we correct all the other inflationary things that are going on, which will be corrected. And then we're in a position to grow this entire area there and build homes and bring people into Jasper and to grow our base. That's going to benefit, all those people that live in those homes are going to buy from all of our businesses and they'll support our community. And without growth, we're stagnant. And without growth, I worry about the companies that we have here that are strong, strong companies that have been the lifeblood of our community and give back. And we have to have people to work at those places. So without housing, we're going to depend on people just driving here for the rest of our lives. And that isn't going to make it. It's not going to make it. We've got to have a solution. And this is a step in the right direction into what we need to do to enable our community to grow and get the necessary people that we need to come and be in our community.
And we're talking about 1.1 million on a 42 million dollar development.
And $495,000 per $459,000, too.
Okay, so let's say 1.5 million on that, which is about 4%.
I want to.
1,1 and 459?
I had one last note, and since Paul brought it up, I just want to make sure that, you know, that everything that, we didn't ask for anything to be bonded upfront and which could potentially put the city at risk either. The original amount that we asked for was equal to the ready grant because I was really hoping that we had a competitive project and I wholeheartedly believe that we did. So with that being said, you know, I never once asked through any meeting that the city bond this upfront and take that risk. As a citizen here in Jasper, I think it's, it was a fair proposal for the developer to take the full risk of this project. And we are because it's on a performance base. If I don't perform, none of this conversation even matters, the main extension or the TIF itself. So to be able to provide a project like this that's going to provide housing at the most attainable price we can and deliver 155 new housing units at essentially no risk to the city, I think it's an incredible deal all the way around. And it's a good win-win situation for everybody. And that's the reason why we structured that way from the beginning. So I just wanted, that was the last main point that I wanted to point out today. There's other things that I have noted down. You know, the benefit from the local income tax duration from new residents moving into local spending and the support on existing retail stores and things like that. I mean, the impact is very broad. It's not just this TIF area. The folks that are moving into this area are going to benefit the community as a whole. So that was the last main point that I wanted to make tonight. Wanted to make sure I had time to say so.
And the only other thing is, if you look back at everything that we've done over the last several years, the big projects that we've had, they've all been public-private partnerships. Okay, that's what this is. This is a public-private partnership. And the decision to, it's an opportunity for our community to grow. And there's no other areas in our community that I know of where we have an opportunity to grow at this extent. And he's putting a lot on the line in order to make this happen.
Yeah. And, you know, I'll add, too. I mean, he uses local contractors for your heating, air conditioning, plumbing. You know, you buy your supplies locally.
Yeah.
You know, some benefits a lot of people.
It's a tremendous economic impact for us.
And not to be a negative Nancy on that subject as well, but having sat on the plan commission for the last 12 years, the last time we had a major subdivision come in that was on this one, we had two, Autumn Creek, which saw tremendous pushback from the neighbors and became a tremendous success on its own in Brookstone 7. And both of those have been multiple years.
Correct.
Without all the people knocking our doors down to come in and pick up ground. It's, we're in a tough market. We're paying Indianapolis pricing for ground in the middle of southern Indiana.
Ruger, have you seen any projections on the price of materials or anything, you know, with the wildfires and all that? Or have you seen anything, what it's going to happen? I mean, are we putting you in a burden even making you do 10% at 275? That could be impossible.
Well, no, not yet.
No.
But that is a real thought.
It's going to impact. It will.
Hopefully, it's a temporary impact.
Yeah.
Yeah. So with that, that's a good thought. But I feel confident with any potential headwind coming in that I'm agreeing that we will be able to deliver on that developer agreement with these new prices. While it is still, I would deem it ambitious. I'm confident in those numbers, so.
I think we have to consider who the target audience is, target consumer for this price point as well. Vince has said this in a couple of different ways himself. I'm looking from, and Kevin, you bring up the inflation question. So I went back to the year 2000 and I looked at median household income in Jasper was at 4, these are approximates, but it was at 42,000 in the year 2000. In today's dollars, to equal a $24,000, you're looking at, that would have to be about $76,000 for median income for a household. The median income Jasper as of the 2020 census is 65,000. So it's significantly less than, I guess, as far as buying power is concerned, significantly less than what it was in 2000. In 2000, the median home price was 170, I'm sorry, 96,000. In today's dollars, it's 173. But the median home value as of the 2020 census is 203. And so what that tells me, there's a divergence there. And I'm not a real estate guy and I don't know exactly what to do with this. But what used to take 2.3 times annual income to purchase a median house, a median-sized home, median-priced home, now takes 3.1 times annual household income to do the same. So you're getting less bang for your buck compared to what we used to historically, so.
But that's happening everywhere. That's not isolated in Jasper, yeah.
But, okay, but I go back to January last year and we had Dr. Hicks, Dr. Michael Hicks here. And he said, people are willing to pay a premium to come live, to build a home, a higher-priced home, to pay more to live in a community like ours. He said, we're not doing too shabby. He said that. And so he's an opinion that I do appreciate and respect. I go back to him from time to time. And I just think that that's a powerful statement. People are willing to pay a premium to live in a place like Jasper.
Does the $67,000 include every person that lives in the county or in the city of Jasper?
Just median. So there's as many people who earn more than that, or I should say, many households who earn more than that as there are who earn less than that.
Well, most, I have some experience in manufacturing and Dean does, Phil does. Most of the manufacturing in our community, both the husband and the wife work. Okay? So if 67,000 is not what they're making with both parents, with both of the adults in the house working, they're closer to 80 to $100,000. In my case, I don't work anymore. So I'm in your category there, the 67,000, you know? Okay, I'm not earning, okay? So if that's the median for what we're doing here, when you take retired people and when I look at the manufacturing base that we have here, it is absolutely critical for those companies to be successful, for us to remain Jasper, the Jasper that we know and love. It's absolutely critical for those companies to have employees and to be successful. So that's the only disagreement I would have with the 67,000, you know? And the 80% of the people that live in Jasper that work outside the home, a husband and wife probably work. And if anybody disagrees with that, please speak up. I'm just, I'm saying that's from my knowledge of 40 years of working in manufacturing, so.
I wish the housing dilemma we're in was simple. I wish there was a simple answer to it, but it's not. It's complex. It's got a lot of elements to it, as you indicated, price points and where you are and starting your life and how much money can you put toward a home versus a rental. And those kind of things are big decisions. And we have more people retiring today than we've had in a long time, you know, because of the boomers. Boomers are reaching retirement age. So you're seeing some of those income levels come down, even though they may have established their wealth throughout the years. Their spend is going to decrease. You know, I think we're going to be hit by a lot of factors and we won't have enough time to digest it all and come up with a solution. But I do think that what is proposed here is not out of line, is not reasonable. It's not, maybe we didn't do a good job in the very beginning, and I'll take credit for that as the mayor. But this is our first one. It's our first residential TIF and we're learning from it. I think the fact that as we digested the information and we're willing to come back and say, we have the options here to terminate the TIF. We have the option to do that. We have the option to make a modification as Ruger has requested to remove the "in lieu of", and that's really what we're voting on at this point in time, the "in lieu of", removing that from the TIF agreement or the, whatever the other agreement is called, working agreement. We've got two agreements there, right? But, you know, I think that's what we're voting on is to remove the "in lieu of" tonight. And I kind of want to focus on that. That's what's been requested. That's what has been put on the agenda. So I did have, and the discussion has been good and healthy. I, you know, we've got, all got great points. And I think what that does is it brings us to greater solutions, better solutions for the future. And even for now, for this situation. But at this point in time, I want to reel us back in to what the request was and what the agenda item is. And that's the elimination of.
Steve Lickmire, I think, wants to speak, if that's all right.
We didn't have anything scheduled for public. Do we want public?
I would sure like to hear whatever he has to say.
Okay. But Steve, you want to address the podium?
Steve Lickmire, Jasper School Board. So I'd just like to talk about the, nobody here is opposed to development. That's not the issue. I'm 100% obviously personally and professionally in favor of development. The neighborhood up there is going to be great for the city and all the businesses and the companies that need those employees. There's no doubt about that. That's, to me, that's not the question. The question is, is a residential TIF the right tool to be using in this situation? The question is, is a residential TIF the right tool to be using in this situation? And so I would like to throw out a few things. By the way, I'm in favor of commercial TIFs. I'm, I'm in favor of incentivizing developers. They take a lot of risk when they go in and put in a subdivision, so this is nothing against the development, and I think Kirstens has done an incredible job to this community. My point is, from the school corporation's standpoint, a residential TIF, number one, is not necessary, especially in this situation, because we all know that that development's going to take place whether there's a TIF or not. There's no way Kirstens Homes and Homes, Kirstens Development's gonna pay $30,000 an acre and farm it. We all know that. And that's, I, I would think they were crazy if they were gonna continue to farm it. They're not gonna do that. They're gonna develop it. So the question is, if this is reducing the cost to the homeowner, that's great for the homeowner, but who's paying for that? I would say, or propose that, who's paying, not propose, but I would submit, who's paying for that is your constituents, because there's no downward pressure on the tax rate, because this TIF maintains that tax level for 20 years, where that, the increased AV would lower the tax rate and lower the taxes to your constituents, but now it's not. So that's ultimately, at the end of the day, the taxpayers across the city of Jasper are paying for that TIF. The, so residential TIFs are different, different than the commercial TIFs too, like the River Center, that probably would not have moved forward without a TIF. It needed that kind of boost. Again, a residential TIF doesn't need that. Secondly, a commercial TIF doesn't impact the schools like a residential TIF does. This neighborhood is potentially gonna bring 50 more students, plus or minus, based on state averages, into our school system. So yes, we are going to get, the average daily membership rate is going to increase, and we'll get that amount per student as they come in each year, this counted twice a year. The problem is, the tax money that comes in, that funds our facilities and operations, we won't be getting. So the residential TIF is negatively impacting the school because it's increasing the student body count, but not increasing the revenue to the school.
Have, have we ever, and I think I know the answer to this already, but I wanna hear you say it too, by state statute, again, the school is able to ask us for monies from the TIF in there. To my knowledge, we've never had that asked.
That's correct.
There's just central from the river.
And I, and I said this in the redevelopment commission meeting, it's kinda hard for me to be happy about giving away my money and then getting the opportunity to ask for it back. So in that light, I would ask, in this situation, if you want to continue with a residential TIF, I would request that there be a pass-through that basically carves out for the school, the money that would've gone to the school due to the increased AV is automatically given to the school without any request from the school, and that's allowed.
I think it isn't allowed. I thought you had to have a, you had to have that, we had to have it tied to a project, as I understand.
I've been told that you can have a pass-through for a taxing entity such as a school, that that's accepted from the TIF, basically. And so that money, so we're not doing this to the detriment of our students and our school corporation. So I would request that a pass-through be applied. And the, lastly, two sessions ago, we had this, the TIF was a 20, or a 10-year TIF. So I don't know why, and I wasn't privy to any conversations, nor should I be, I guess, but why it went to a 20-year, I don't understand. Dr. Lori and Travis McQueen and I left the first city council meeting. We said, that's fair. That's a good compromise. 10 years in, we probably wouldn't see that much money anyway to our entities, but from the 10 to 20 years, now we're starting to see a big difference where that money is not coming into our, our entities. And so Ruger just said that he hopes to have it complete in 10 years, I think, is, or what they were probably in the ballpark. So my question is, why would we go beyond 10 years on the TIF if the project's gonna be complete in 10 years? So first and foremost, I guess if I were prioritizing my request, one, I don't think a residential TIF in this situation is reasonable, definitely not necessary. Two, if you are going to do a residential TIF, I am again requesting that it stay at 10 years so that we're not, and by the way, and that it pass through, or if it's, I mean, I don't think it should go 20 years, but if it is, either way, I think there should be a pass-through to the school corporation so that it's not detrimental to our schools. And that's my request.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other comments? If not, you know, again, what's been put on the table to me has been to vote on the removal of "in lieu of." And I wanna take action on that first before we move on to anything else, okay? So I had...
Well, Renee just told me, just to address one of Steve's concerns, the redevelopment commission can annually...
Pass through.
Pass, do a pass-through.
Is that right, though, that we can do, do it as a straight pass-through to the school corporation?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, not disagreeing with you, I just don't know the answer to that question.
Still gonna take time.
Sure, 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 sure. But that's, that's an RDC.
Yeah.
Annual review that comes through.
That's correct.
And there can be a request for that as well, right?
Yes.
Like if...
Well, I think, this will be a formal request, but Steve just gave us an informal request for a pass-through.
No, I'm talking about a request for something that's specific.
That's right. And that's how I always understood it to be on a TIF, was you had a request for a specific project that couldn't go into operating funds, it had to go into construction. I don't think you can go into transportation. I think it had to be project specific.
It could be a number of factors.
Something like that. I would like to have that reviewed a little bit. Steve, if you wanted to, or Renee, you know, research that a little bit and see what the qualifications are for that request.
If that can be added on the front end, I'm always in favor of that.
Well, that'll be come through RDC. That won't come on the front end now. We're, we're talking about now, the "in lieu of" in there.
Do we know that definitively, that it can't be added on the front end?
No, I just said that.
That's what I thought.
The only thing that could be changed about this TIF is the words "in lieu of."
That's what's on the table right now.
We can't change the terms of the TIF tonight. That requires to go back through the process.
But the dollar amount of the conditional expenditure agreement could be changed.
Yes, that's not changing the terms of the TIF. That's changing the conditional expenditure agreement.
So in order to change the terms of the sunset on the TIF from a 20-year back to a 10-year, you did provide us a timetable on that, and it looks like that would start January 28th, providing an open-door note, law notice of economic, the EDC, I guess, would have to meet.
It, it would be the same process that we went through when we, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the timeline in front of me, but basically you would be talking about February meetings and March meetings.
Well, the end of February, I mean, the end of January, pardon me, would have to be a notice of a public hearing of the EDC for February 17th.
But that takes us back around to second RDC. RDC is already equal to them.
They could do that, but I would rather see that the ordinance actually be worded to a 10-year sunset rather than a 20-year, as we had originally talked about.
And I disagree with that whenever we turned to it earlier. I said, my opinion was, and I said this publicly last time too, I would like to see us get the TIF in place. I'd like to see the payback, and I would like to see it go two years beyond that so that we can apply those monies towards fire, police, public safety issues in there, is my, so we all bring different opinions to where it is.
That's right.
But I think, I mean, at this point, we're, we have to, we've agreed to do the TIF.
Right now, we have...
Now we're talking about amending language tonight, correct?
Well, there's basically three options.
Yeah.
But it could be changed, so. I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready for that.
I'm ready for an option, a motion.
I like the reaffirming the existing TIF agreement and delete the "in lieu of" the utility, so that would be an addition.
So I have a motion from John to delete the language "in lieu of" and reaffirming the TIF agreement.
Utility reimbursement.
Allowing the utility.
Allowing the utility reimbursement. Okay, I have a motion from John with that. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Kevin. Any further discussion on that?
I don't have any problem with the water main or the, the main extensions being included, but I do have a problem with reaffirming, so I don't know if that motion can be reworded differently, because I would like to vote yes in favor of the utility main extensions, but I do not want to vote yes in favor of reaffirming the TIF at the 20-year.
Yeah. To be clear, the council's decision tonight would not be to affirm or not the utilities. That's been approved by the utility service board.
I thought we had to re, I thought we also had to put our staff...
Let me, let me, so what the council tonight decides is whether with that in place, they wanna go forward and allow the TIF to remain as is, because the TIF currently set, not the, not the ordinance, but the conditional expenditure agreement, it says that that financing incentive is being provided in lieu of the utilities. So if you want to allow the TIF incentive and to go forward with the utilities, then you would vote, as John just said, to affirm the, the previous decision on the TIF documents striking the "in lieu of," which is, I think, that's...
The utility service board last night voted to agree to the water main extension.
Upon counsel approval.
Yes, I understand.
Right, and I tried to explain that, but the...
No. That's what we read.
As it stands, I think the utility service board agreed to the water main extension agreement up to 459,000.
Correct, I understand.
So then, I think the council's choice is to either affirm it, removing the "in lieu of" language, that what our main agreement stands. Your vote is specific about the conditional expenditure agreement. Do you wanna provide a $1.1 million conditional expenditure agreement? Do you wanna change that, or do you wanna not go forward with it? And I think John's motion was to go forward with it.
With the 20-year sunset as it was.
That's how I understood it.
So if you wanted 10 years, we'd have to vote no.
That's right.
And we'd have to rework it.
That's right. We'd start over. So I have a motion from John, a second from Kevin. Any other discussion on that? Thanks for the clarifying.
Yeah.
Vince. Hearing none. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, I heard John, Paul, Kevin, and Vitham, so I have four. All against, vote nay?
Nay.
So I have Nancy, Vince, and Chad. So four to three, it firms. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a donation acceptance. This is for the Parklands Fire Tower.
Yeah, so I think that the last two meetings, we set up a restricted-use donation fund for a donation that we were receiving from a donor that had their money at the community foundation. We have that fund set up. It's a restricted-use donation fund specifically for a fire tower. The park board is aware of the conditions surrounding the donation and are in agreement with it and plans to have the fire tower on their long-range plan. So my request to you guys tonight is to accept a donation of $162,529.66 to go into the fund that we created.
A special, a special line item, right?
We created a new fund, so it'll go into a new fund. Park, I had to make sure that Park was aware of the restrictions, and they are, and then I'm asking you to accept the donation.
And this isn't, until, it'll sit in that in perpetuity until we...
We will, it will sit in there, and we will invest it, and we will put the interest earned back into the account. Other people could donate to that restricted-use fund as well, and when the city is ready to build a fire tower.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
Second from Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Regional Wellness Center update, since this week, I know we had updates and, and council members were involved in some discussions with Baker Tilly explaining the, the finances as proposed and how we would be able to afford the facility not to exceed a $45 million amount. Broke it into the revenue sources to pay the bond, broken into the cash contributions and where they were coming from. And I think it was, those were good meetings. I appreciate the discussion and questions that took place during those meetings. We also had a finance committee meeting that was addressing the pro forma, what does it look like for the YMCA operating model over the next, for the first three years, and whether or not they'd be able to break even? And that, Mike has, has developed a draft on it, but is not complete at this point in time.
He's not ready to send it out.
No, he's not ready to send it out.
Getting closer. We saw an update today.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, he's getting closer. I think also, Paul, you sent out updated revisions to the...
Got, got pictures of kind of the renderings. That's 90% completed, what we're talking about is, that's what the building will look like if you all looked at that today and the layouts.
If I can ask right, right now, it looked like on the rendering, there was a, I don't know, a basketball court in the, in the pool. Is that correct?
So in that pool section, the flat area that's in there, they have a basketball court painted in there with the goal on there. But that is also what they'll do for aqua aerobics.
Okay.
And swim lessons. It's just a flat, flat surface that's in there, so get kids that are in there, and then transitions in and get a little drop down again to a five-foot depth from that to a four-lane mat. So when you look at, look at all that. And this was multiple, multiple months of going back to the draw. At one point, we told them we wanted to scale back some things on there, and they came back to us with a 7,000 square foot larger.
Yeah.
You know, well, get it all in, this is what we had to do. I'm like, yeah, we're going the wrong way. We gotta get this turned around and back in, so move some things around, and the meetings are productive, slow, but productive to get to this point. Now, I feel like, I think I mentioned it, Phil, when we were talking the other day, that I'm sent to note to you guys, and that the next few weeks now, we'll have a much better idea of what that overall design cost is, is gonna look like. So our phase one, which would be moving earthwork and the likes, and of course, they're chopping, contractors are chopping at the bit. We gotta, gotta be ready to go in March. Slow down here, we're not quite there yet, but they're great meetings. It's taking some time.
And I think Kirsten, you know, we've sat through those meetings, and we felt pretty comfortable with the coverage, not only that we'd be able to afford to, to make the bond payments as projected, but then also we'd have additional funds still available to us to work with, including all the funds that today are committed to streets, sidewalks, other projects, so it wasn't gonna have an impact on our budget. But that was, that was good news.
Then we just have to make sure that the pro forma doesn't have an impact on our budget, too.
Yeah, and, and one of the, the things that we at least proposed to look at was to develop a reserve from which to draw in order to be able to handle any shortfalls in the operation. So we established that upfront. We would at least ensure that for several years, we would have enough there to cover any shortfalls. They, I think that is a doable situation. Talked to Mike, we've decided to put that into our fundraising goal, so it's part of that rather than coming back on the city.
And also talking about the endowment for the long-term maintenance of the facility, opening that up and getting that funded.
And that has...
Yeah, getting that funded.
I was trying to wrap my mind around that. We'll, we'll be responsible for long-term maintenance, right?
Long-term maintenance. But that reserve, operating reserve, is also intended for maintenance of anything.
Do they warranty any of their work?
There will be some warranty, yes.
I mean, this isn't intended to be any different than any other building project in that respect.
Yeah.
Mayor...
We've still got a lot of work to do.
And I had also asked, although, you know, we went through all these dollars and now with Baker Tilly and everything, and it all did make sense. Sometimes when he talks, I don't understand anything he's talking about. But anyway, I was also asking for kind of like an elevator speech or a paragraph that when people ask us as council members or whomever, that we could, and they say, how are you going to pay for this building, that we would have that information, and we could say, this is how, not looking through these papers and saying it's this much and this much, but basically, in a nutshell, the intention of how to pay for this...
intention of how to pay for this building and how to maintain the building.
And, and as Nancy has requested, I committed to doing that elevator speech. I hope, I was hoping to have it available tonight. I, I don't. We've had a lot of things on our plate in the last couple days since we had that meeting, but, but I will provide to council members, so you have that in hand.
One nice, nice highlight, I guess, that we brought up, I had my meeting with them, I'm sitting with these guys, though, too, was that our food and beverage tax that was instituted is far outperforming what we were projecting to use that to pay towards this building. So that would come back in and walk back maybe some over-aided funds, or a few other...
Kirsten, when did we actually start getting money on that this year, or last year?
So it's a two-month lapse, so the January is, January's collections were reported in February, and reported and paid in February, and then the Department of Revenue paid us in March. So that's why we won't have December's payment until...
So we've received 11 months, is that...
We have received 11 months, and we're at 519.
In the first couple months, it was very, very...
And the first few months, it was in the $20,000, $30,000 range, and now we've seen some $65,000 months. I would say the average is probably about 50.
We're looking pretty excited for December.
Yes.
You know, that's usually a big, a big thing involved.
It's going to be good.
I would think so.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll see. I'll let you know.
A lot of it's policing, getting people on board, too.
Right. So, yeah, we had some trouble at the beginning getting people on board, but the Department of Revenue, I worked with them, and they won't divulge its confidential information, because it's people's taxes, but they took the list that I had of people that I expected to pay, and they compared it to who was paying, and they reached out to those who weren't, so.
And one of, one of the points that Baker Tilly made, and I want to reemphasize, is we're taking a conservative look at revenue, and we're taking a conservative look at expenses, too. So we're not, we're going the high side on expenses, and on the revenue side, staying on the low side, so that we make sure we've got coverage. And...
So it'd be a good financial...
Hopefully, when the whole plan is done here, it comes together, yeah. But, but, you know, I think the dialogue's been good. I appreciate the engagement, our, the groups that are working, the finance group, the working group there with YMCA. I think that everybody's doing a good job trying to fork this through. And the fundraising continues. I know the commitment on the fundraising, you know, we originally had a $15 million goal. We're looking now to include other amounts, which includes the cost of the ban, and now the operating reserve. So we'd like to get that, the fundraising, and have it available to us. So never done with that. But, you know, we're coming a long way. And like Paul said, the drawings, I, we all get excited now.
Yeah.
We're getting close.
But it's all numbers. It's scary. Now, you actually see some physical, physical renderings. That makes it a little less, it's still scary, but you see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Paul, thank you for the update. I mentioned earlier that I love to have this every month, but if next, or between now and the next meeting, a couple things do come up. It sounds like there's stuff happening right now. If you could give a update to the board at any time period on there, we would certainly appreciate it. I think, again, communication is everything on projects like this. I feel a lot more comfortable with it when we're all moving on there. This year makes me feel more comfortable about everything, so I think most people would agree. So, thank you.
Well, that was my hope last night, handing you, but I saw Phil, we were here for the swearing-in last night, and handed in my physical drawings. I said, I'm going to send everybody else this evening, and that I had PDF problems getting drawn on the phone last night, so.
Okay.
This morning, so, yeah, good.
Okay. We ready to move on, next agenda? Okay. The Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statements. We have them for Nancy Eckley, Vince Helming, Kenny Hoeksang, Leighton Hoeksang, Cale Keneese, Kirsten Keneese, Paul Lorai, Phil Mundy, Phil Schmidt, Josh Gunsmann, and Rob Young.
That's an all-time list.
That's a big list. And doing them all at once, that's great.
Well, after review of the statements that I got copies of, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from John to approve.
I'll second.
Second, Vince. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Josh's, he does not really give a description of what his conflict of interest is. He has like not applicable on both of those. I would like to see his filled in more thoroughly to explain what his conflict is, not just saying that he's, it doesn't, it just says, I guess, that he works for Self for Free Welsh Realty, but it doesn't really say what the conflict could be.
I don't, I think...
I thought he put in there that he was a realtor.
He did put in that he was working for Self for Free Welsh Realty.
I mean, that was the only one. If that could be corrected, I approve them.
And if our name's on the list, can we vote on it?
I was just going to ask the same thing.
That's all we're... Second.
I don't know if we have enough people to vote.
Do we have enough?
Four.
We need unanimous consent here.
We'd vote for all of them, but...
Vote for all, except for, you'll abstain from one if your name is on.
Well, why doesn't, why don't you just have the mayor, can't we just read the names?
We can do one at a time.
I have a summary here, and I can...
Read the names. Read, just...
Just read ours that are present.
Read a name and vote, and don't vote if you are the person named.
Okay, that's good.
I have a summary. I'm Nancy Eckley, member of common council and board of public works, employed by Jasper Chamber of Commerce, and Matt Eckley, principal of Baker Tilly.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Paul, second from Kevin. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
And then I have Josh Gunsmann, director of community development and planning, Realtor for Self for Free Welsh Realty.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
I have a motion from Kevin, a second from Chad. Further discussion? All in favor?
Again, if they could just be more complete, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then I have Vince Helming, member of common council, relation to Helming Brothers, with whom the city does contract with from time to time.
I'll make a motion to approve Vince.
I have a motion from Kevin, second from Phil.
I don't know about this one.
All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kenny Hoeksang, fire chief code enforcement officer. His son, Leighton, is a rep for Dingus Fire Company, who the city does sometimes purchase supplies from.
I'll make a motion to approve Kenny.
I'll second Kenny.
Kevin and Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So then I have Leighton Hoeksang, lieutenant Jasper Fire Department, a rep for Dingus Fire Company, which, who the city sometimes does purchase supplies from.
I'll make a motion to approve Leighton.
I'll second.
Nancy and Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Cale Keneese, director of personnel safety loss control, and a member of the GIE Advisory Committee, GIE, Bliss McDi, contracts with the city on a yearly basis.
I'll make a motion to approve Cale.
I'll second.
Kevin, Phil. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we do the rest of them by acclamation?
Nope, Phil.
Phil's in there.
Kirsten Keneese, clerk treasurer, city of Jasper, husband, par owner, Keneese Construction, Cape Corries, Calcar paving, which, whom the city does...
I'll make a motion for Kirsten.
Thanks.
I'll second it pending audit.
Kevin and Paul. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next up, Paul Lorai, member of the common council, employed with Hope Equipment, who the city does sometimes purchase equipment from.
I'll make a motion for Paul.
Nancy and Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Paul abstains.
Phil Mundy, member of the common council, owner of Mundy Outdoors LLC, with whom the city does purchase equipment from, from time to time.
I'll make a motion to approve Phil.
I'll second.
Kevin and Nancy. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Phil Schmidt, utility service board member, owner of Schmidt Contracting, with whom the city does business with.
Make a motion to approve Phil.
I'll second.
Paul and Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Rob Young, general, general manager of utility, sits on the EMPA board. The city has a power sales contract with EMPA.
Motion to approve Rob. Paul?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have.
All right. Is there anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.